All right. Mr. Clerk, it seems like I have a series of cards on Item 2. Maybe we could begin with that? Or I should ask Mr. Parks, did you want to speak on Item 2? Because we have several cards, so I'm going to hear the cards.
And, Mr. President, that's Item 2, Resolution. Parks, Bluman Field, and Chief Legislative Analyst Report, Relative to Including in the City's 2013-14 State Legislative Program Support for SB 4, Paveley, if amended, which would strengthen regulations surrounding fracking activities by requiring the issuance of public notices, permits, and details of chemicals used during the fracking process, as well as a complete scientific study on the impacts of fracking on surrounding communities and the environment.
Go ahead, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I would just ask that, being that much of this oil fields that fracking is going on impacts the western part of the city in Baldwin Hills, View Park, a variety of communities, that this is the only remaining bill in the legislature that has any impact on fracking? All of the bills, seven others that dealt with moratoriums and a variety of techniques have been killed during the process. This bill at least, and everyone's not happy with it, but at least starts a process of an independent study that will begin to deal with fracking as relates to the health-featured factors and a variety of things. We think that it at least starts the process. Also, there's some things that, in my judgment, should be added to the legislation, if amended, that deals with this whole issue of trade secrets, where they want to use that as an exclusive right not to tell the community what chemicals might be used in their fracking process, what the contamination in water that's left underground. Also, one of the areas it seems to be omitted, and everyone that's looked at this appears that they support it, is that seismic impact of fracking. There are a lot of studies that show that fracking could cause mini earthquakes and then could cause a larger earthquake, and so that's an area that appears that we need to ensure that's added to the study. And then the whole industry looking at ways in which best practices. My understanding is that you use 20 times more water on fracking wells as opposed to regular wells. That certainly should impact a very precious resource in water in California as to that amount of usage. And then the other issue is that the whole area of health for the community and employees that work in that industry. So those are the kind of amendments I think would be of great benefit to this legislation, but I think it would be a failure of the state if we did not have at least a bill that addressed fracking this year. If this one dies, we have no recourse except to continue as we are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parks, for coming before this committee and testifying. Okay, I have cards from the public. I'm going to allow for 90 seconds public comment, starting off with Kara Seward from my former seatmate Fran Pavley's office, Erin Steva, and John from Earthworks. If you please line up behind Kara. Good morning, and give my best to the senator.
Will do. I'm going to read an excerpt from a letter submitted to the council files from Senator Pavley, author of SB 4. SB 4 provides a comprehensive statutory framework for fracking and acidization as part of general well stimulation regulations in California. The bill provides the strongest well stimulation statutory framework in the country. The resolution before your committee today supports SB 4 if certain issues are addressed. Through various legislative amendments, many of these items have been resolved. SB 4 requires full public disclosure of all chemicals used in the well stimulation treatment with public reporting of the amount of chemical composition of flowback fluids. SB 4 specifically requires that the scientific study triggered by the legislation includes an assessment of seismicity, including the risks of induced earthquakes by well stimulation and related activities. Amendments proposed for SB 4 add extensive regional groundwater monitoring specifically geared to protecting the state's drinking water resources. SB 4 already requires a sequel process, including public input for every well stimulation treatment. SB 4 requires that all chemical information be provided to emergency responders, all health professionals, and public health researchers. SB 4 ensures that local governments will have all the information needed to make informed decisions about local zoning ordinances. SB 4 will also require that a well stimulation permit be issued. Additionally, copies of the permit will be provided to the local planning entity, ensuring that local review of conditional use permits for oil field activities will be fully informed. SB 4 is the only bill remaining in the legislature on this issue. Without this bill, the only regulation over hydraulic fracturing will be issued from the Department of Conservation's Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources.
Okay, let's try to get to the end.
Okay, "which will be insufficient to address the concerns outlined in the resolution before the committee and will not address the acidization in any form." Also to note, in addition to the letter, the bill in no way precludes future legislation preventing a ban or moratorium on fracking. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Kara, that your boss was my seatmate in the legislature.
I do. I will give her your best.
And when she first got there, I was in the process of putting together the votes to become the Speaker of the House, which meant I had to leave my seat on a regular basis and was dependent upon Fran to vote for me. After that session, I won the legislator of the year award for the environmental community. So, thanks to Fran, okay? Anyway, again, I love her, give her my best. So we have Erin, and John, and I think it's Denise, and I can't pronounce the last name. So go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Erin Steva. I'm an analyst with Community Health Councils. For more than two decades, Community Health Councils has led efforts to eliminate health disparities in under-resourced communities in South Los Angeles. We have also worked closely with many of the communities surrounding the Baldwin Hills oil field for years to push for greater public health protections. We are here today to support Councilmember Parks' resolution and to recommend listing additional protections. California needs tighter fracking regulations now. Two wells were fracked in the Baldwin Hills oil field last year, and many other wells across Los Angeles County support fracking-related activities like acidization. Rising oil prices, large oil reserves, and technological advances mean pressure to frac will increase over time. So although fracking is happening and fracking-related activities are happening, we don't fully understand the repercussions of those actions. We consider SB 4 and this resolution much-needed overdue first steps towards effective study and regulation of fracking in California.
You might want to start your call.
Okay, so we also make two recommendations for how to improve this resolution. Have the scientific study look at best practices for all fracking-related activities, and make sure the regulations require adherence to those best practices. We would also support a stronger bill that includes a moratorium until the study is completed and safe practices are possible, that there's proof that that can happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I think I have a John, and a Dennis, and after that a Brenda, Brenna Norton. Brenna Norton, please come to the center aisle. Go right ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is John Everlaz. I am with Earthworks. We are here to support Resolution 2 and Senator Pavley's SB 4. There are significant problems with oil and gas development that put communities in risk. The science does not yet exist to determine if it's possible to extract oil and gas that is safe for the environment and public health. There are inadequate regulations currently at the local, federal, and state level that leave us vulnerable to unsafe drilling and fracking. Thank you very much. However, we are faced with two separate questions. Under what circumstances, if any, should new oil and gas development occur? And in what places where drilling is already occurring, what steps must be taken to protect air, water, and the health of these communities? The answer to this question is simple. Decisions about oil and gas development must put communities first. This means that in communities where development has not yet occurred, it should only be allowed to proceed after the majority of scientific evidence demonstrates that oil and gas can be developed in a safe way. In communities where development has already occurred, an existing regulatory framework must move the policies that protect water, air, land, and the public first, rather than maximizing resource development.
Okay, look at your time.
Yes. In other words, what we're saying is we need to put our community first. We must have the answers first before allowing fracking, and we believe that in supporting any sort of scientific study that will allow for safe development of this resource, but we also support a ban or a moratorium in this if it comes, if it's necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, and after Brenna Norton, do we have Alexandria Nagy? Or Nagy? Please come forward. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Dennis Akbarsholu. I'm here to comment on SB 4, obviously, but I'd like to begin with the California Constitution. California Constitution has specific and explicit clauses to protect water in California. Perhaps that's because this is a desert state, or perhaps that is because water is life. But if you're a person in Dish, Texas, or Dimmock, Pennsylvania, these sorts of discussions are completely superfluous, because right now, people in those towns are either moving or they're dying because their water has been poisoned. As someone who lives in Los Angeles County, I would love never to have to hear these sorts of stories coming out of my county or my city. I moved here from New York to Los Angeles because I wanted the California lifestyle. And now the California lifestyle is being imperiled by profits, and that is not right. There is no amount of regulation that is going to make this technology safe, and you can see it pretty clearly in the fact that this regulation is banking on trade secrets. Excuse me, I'd appreciate it if you didn't talk to each other as I'm talking towards you.
We have to comment sometime. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, trade secrets? There must be a reason why the trade secrets clause is being held onto so firmly.
Look, Mr. Clerk, watch your time.
Well, it says 34 seconds, right?
No, I said 90 seconds. The timer is two minutes. So I cut you off at 30 seconds.
Okay.
So make your last sentence.
Okay. Trade secrets, right? The only reason those clauses are in there, because the industry knows that this is poison, and that is exactly what they're trying to push on people, and if you vote for that, you're voting to poison people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So can we have Brenna Norton, Alexandra Nagy, Paul Farazzi? If you're here, please make your way to the center aisle. Go right ahead.
Council President Wesson and Councilmember Labange. Thank you for hearing this today. I am Brenna Norton with the Watchdog Nonprofit Food and Water Watch. I work with hundreds of your constituents, Council President Wesson, who are currently affected by fracking. Many of the neighborhood councils in your district, representing thousands of constituents, have passed motions supporting Paul Coretts' original motion, supporting calling on the state to put a moratorium on practice until it's proven safe. They are waiting to hear the results today and want you to stand strong with Paul Coretts' original motion and not pass this motion today. They do not believe that SB 4 will protect them, because there's no timeout to study it. There needs to be a timeout to study this practice, so they're not getting pigs to a practice while it's happening right now. In addition, there's many, many communities throughout Southern California, Culver City, Santa Monica, Oakland, Marin County, that have passed resolutions calling for a moratorium on fracking. And I ask LA to stand strong with those cities and not pass a weak regulatory resolution on fracking, but to be a leader and say that no one deserves to have this practice happening, and there should be a timeout until it can shown to be safe. So, thank you very much for your time, and I hope LA will stand strong today.
Thank you. And just quickly, I will say, I have had a couple of conversations with Mr. Coretts. We will hear his bill, but I will strongly recommend that we move forward today. So anyway, with that said, Alexandra Nagy, right?
Yes. Hi, everyone. Alexandra Nagy, also with Food and Water Watch. Like Brenna, I work with many neighborhood councils, specifically in the San Fernando Valley, and many of them have expressed interest in a ban on fracking and support Coretts' resolution for a moratorium on fracking. In addition to being one of the first national organizations calling for a ban on fracking, we have joined a coalition in California called Californians Against Fracking that was launched in May of this year. And when we launched that organization, we had 100 groups calling for a ban on fracking in the state, and we delivered 100,000 petitions to Governor Brown's office here in LA. And over the short course of three months, we have seen that petition grow 50,000 signatures. And so that shows that this issue is really resonating with not only people in Los Angeles where fracking is occurring, but throughout the state, and we're very concerned. And SB 4 simply just doesn't cut it. It allows fracking to continue while studying it. That doesn't make any sense. We don't know anything about fracking in this state because we haven't looked at it before, so we should really stop it altogether and study it so that we can ensure that we don't have the horror stories that we're hearing in Pennsylvania and from across the country. And quite frankly, this bill gives the political cover that we don't want it to give to many legislators who say that they would support a stronger bill, but SB 4 is very convenient.
Okay, watch your time. It's time to wrap it up. Thank you. Okay, are you Paul? Followed by Dr. Williams? Followed by Arnold Sachs, the last speaker. Yes, sir.
Paul Farazzi, Citizens Coalition for a Safe Community. We're a grassroots nonprofit organization that was one of the four litigants in the sequel lawsuit against the county for the EIR/CSD. One of the things that we demanded as part of our, or requested as part of our settlement with PXP, the operator in the county, was the hydraulic fracturing study that made the public more aware of what was actually going on and exactly what was going on in the Inglewood oil field. I would invite your office or your office staff to meet with me so I can show you some physical evidences of what's actually happening in that oil field with regard to satellite INSAR information. And you'll see exactly why it is that the county has abrogated its responsibility to the public and to the citizens of Los Angeles. What's happening is all of the neighborhoods that are seeing uplift, that's because of the enhanced recovery, and also it's exacerbated by the types of hydraulic fracturing they're doing, and that they're weakening the formations as far as subsidence. So basically, the oil field's doing this. It's breathing, because they're pushing the oil to the producing wells. And I know, Councilman Labange, you have issues in the mid-Wilshire area with the type of gases that are escaping from the oil field that also escaped from this oil field. So I would invite your staff to see this evidence that I have, and I'd appreciate appointments with all of them on this committee so that you could move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. You're going over your time, Paul, but thank you.
Yeah.
So now I've got Dr... No, no, no. Everybody gets 90 seconds. Dr. Williams, followed by Arnold Sachs.
Dr. Tom Williams, ALA 32 Neighborhood Council, but also a member of Citizens Coalition for Safe Community. Over five years ago, we started looking at the Baldwin Hills-Inglewood field. Why? Because we didn't want the same thing to happen there that happened at the Ross Dress for Less store in 1985, when 25 people went to the hospital because of an explosion. Eventually, the oil company said, yeah, we overpressurized one of the abandoned wells, and it blew out. We're going to have more blowouts. We also have oil operations in the midst of residential areas on Pico, on Jefferson, on 23rd. We have a lot of oil under the ground. If the price of oil goes to $105, $110 a barrel here in California, hey, they're going to be fracking even more than they are now. But basics: informed consent. Pavley's bill tries to do that. It's not the perfect bill. Maybe next year it'll be even more perfect. I don't know. But the main thing is informed consent. Nobody even knows where these oil fields are and where the oil production facilities are, and it only takes 10 days to get a permit. And it's a default approval permit. It's not an default.
Doc, look at your time.
Yeah, I know. So, support the bill? Great.
Thank you.
Get things started now.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. Good to see you again. Mr. Sachs, come on forward. Good to see you too, Arnold.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Everybody must have missed the Board of Supervisors meeting this past Tuesday. They just allocated or just approved fracking, as a matter of fact, to remove contaminated groundwater from an unincorporated area of the county, then they're going to send it to a mysterious treatment plant located outside the county right away. Well, this area of the county is surrounded by the city of LA, so I'm wondering if the city of LA has approved a treatment plant. Then they're going to have injection in a franchise groundwater treatment plant, then transport the treated water to the injection wells whereby the county will receive $80,000 for franchise and permit fees. So it's already, it's been approved. They named a franchisee. Well, the difference between a franchisee and a franchise... McDonald's is a franchise. You can buy a McDonald's franchise, you become the franchisee. Listening to discussion with one of the supervisors, who remain nameless because he's nameless, and the county attorney, well, the county attorney said you could sue the franchise, but they've named the franchisee. So there's no coverage for the public there as far as liability, because they're naming the franchisee, they're not naming the franchise owner. It's a Delaware corporation, and so California Constitution doesn't apply to the Board of Supervisors. Keep that in mind.
Thank you, Arnold. Okay, so we've just heard all of the... Did you turn in a card after the conversation had begun? Because we don't accept cards after we begin public comment. I don't have a card. Alan, do we have a card on?
We have a number of them, sir.
We what?
We have a number of them.
Is it for Item 2?
Yes, sir. There's four more.
And they came after we started the discussion or before?
After the discussion had begun, sir.
Okay, so what I will do with the final four, I'll give you one minute, but what happens is generally, once we start, cards submitted after the conversation just go into the record. So if I could have Dr. Susan Benedetti Kent from the Sierra Club, Linda, I think it's Escalante, and I'm really having difficulty with this doctor's name. So help me out and come get in line. Come on up, and then when you get to the podium, state your name. Okay, please, state your name.
Dr. Susanda Benedettis. I'm a Mar Vista homeowner, and I'm here to ask you and urge you to reconsider Mr. Coretts' resolution for a moratorium till proven safe. Although they've been fracking for 60 years, the depth and intensity is exponentially riskier. In fact, USC now has an induced seismicity consortium, and science still has to find a way to prevent or predict earthquakes, as we know from National Academy of Sciences, USGS. So consider what LA has to lose and what has to gain if your vote inadvertently triggers the big one. Would you want that on your watch? Wisdom dictates precaution. I can give you lots of documentation as to the others, thus with the safety of all for whom you have a moral duty to protect. I ask you to hold off on regs until the hazardous process can be proven safe. Please reconsider Mr. Coretts' resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please identify yourself.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Linda Escalante with NRDC, Natural Resources Defense Council. I'm here today to support the Councilmember Parks' resolution in support of SB 4. NRDC has been working throughout the country to help protect communities from the risk of fracking. In California, oil companies use fracking and other technologies like acidizing to top oil deposits that were previously unreachable. This has been going on for some time, yet the state has no mechanism in place to monitor these practices. Evaluate the risk or ensure the protection of the public health or our environment. We have no information about the chemicals being injected into the ground near our neighborhoods or about the impacts to drinking water resources. As before, we put in place this most basic measures and others to protect the health and safety of all Californians. Our staff have worked with Senator Pavley to improve many of the bill's provisions and to ensure that it covers not just fracking, but acidizing, a process which uses hydrochloric acid to break apart rock formations to get the oil. As California considers significant expansion of oil and gas development, Monterey Shale, it is critical to enact protections for our land, air, and water.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next. Sergeant, if you have another card, bring it to me. This is the last card, the one that the sergeant is bringing to me. Doctor.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. My name is Kinkin G. I'm a physician and a neurologist, a resident of Culver Crest for 23 years. In 2006, there was a release of noxious gases into our environment, and folks from my street, Kelmore Street, and Culver City, had to be evacuated because of nausea, dizziness. There are two people with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, a young child with seizures. So we are affected as we speak. I have three issues with the Pavley bill. Number one, on page 13, line 23, it calls for a revelation of trade secrets 30 to 60 days after the release or the use of noxious chemicals. That does not give us time as physicians to help our patients. We need 30 to 60 days before the use of these chemicals. And secondly, we have an issue with chemical additives, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson.
Okay. Are you Kent?
Yes, I'm Kent.
Come forward, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Kent Minow. I'm a resident of Sherman Oaks, and I work for the Sierra Club and the Beyond Coal Campaign. I just want to ask you to support Coretts' resolution to ban fracking in the city and county. The regulation proposal doesn't make sense, because there's currently no provision in the regulatory mechanisms of the state or the county or the city to actually monitor air and water impacts of fracking. The doggers don't do it. They only monitor the integrity of the well. So there's really no feasible mechanism to actually regulate fracking. Only a moratorium or a ban can effectively protect the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I'm going to have you, the last speaker, state your name, because I can't make it out. Okay, so you write like me.
I apologize. I was in a hurry. My name is Aura Walker. I'm a concerned parent and citizen. A-U-R-A-W-A-L-K-E-R. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the state of California and the residents of Los Angeles and Culver City. Although I'm a resident of Culver City, the company Freeport McRohan Copper and Gold that is fracking the Inglewood oil fields wants to do vertical-to-hor horizontal fracking underneath Culver City to Pico Boulevard, which enters into Los Angeles. The Inglewood oil fields are in a seven-point magnitude earthquake fault line. You cannot regulate earthquakes like that. There's also a frac tower by the 405 and Wilshire Boulevard. If there's an earthquake there, that will collapse the 405. I started a petition that is growing towards 40,000 signatures for the state of California. I included the last page, because there's too much data to put it on a disk, but you can see, and if you go to signon.org, you can see the petition under "Ban Fracking California."
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, on this item, Mr. Labange, did you have any comments?
I just want to thank everyone's public comment on this, which I heard, the strong feelings, and I think this is an evolving situation, especially in the opening remarks of Mr. Parks, when he spoke about earthquake faults, because we all must be prepared, there will be another one coming. And also, the difference between here and the deep, there is a difference between the deep, deep lands of Alberta, Canada, and other places where there's heavy fracking going. This is in a residential area, in a built environment, which is a challenge. So I may be more understanding of fracking in the deeps of Canada at the same time in the deeps of Baldwin Hills. And the last speaker from Culver City, because I know boundaries, you know... And the last speaker from Culver City, because I know boundaries, you know, are interlaid right there as a concern. So, I think there's a higher test absolutely to take, but even, I don't, I have trouble doing it in the urban area in the built environment. And by the way, Dr. Williams, the problem at Third and Auden was, a lot of it was with the methane gas that exists underneath the La Brea Tar Pits, which could be in the same plume underneath. We don't know, you know, the geology of, well, so there's some, I just want to thank you, everybody, and I support this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Labange. So, I will recommend that we adopt the resolution in the CLA report, resolution by Mr. Parks, Mr. Bloomingfield. Without objection, that'll be the order. You get that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I'm going to go to items three and four. Mr. Sacks, we already satisfied public hearing in item three. So, I'm going to ask the clerk to read the items, and then, Mr. Labange, we can move forward. We have no cards on these items.
Right. Item number three, CLA report and resolution relative to including in the city's 2013-14 state legislative program, opposition to SB 439, Steinberg, which would exempt marijuana collectives, cooperatives, entities, and persons from criminal prosecution or punishment. Item number four, CLA report and resolution relative to including in the city's 2013-14 state legislative program, opposition to SB 566, Leno, which would permit hemp to be grown in California upon federal approval by defining industrial hemp to be excluded from the definition of marijuana.
Mr. Clerk, do you have the alternate recommendations in your possession?
I do not, sir.
Okay, could you make sure that they, basically, what we want to do, you make sure he gets that, substitute the resolution to the sort, support the bills and approve and note and file the CLA's report. And Mr. Westall is bringing you. Is that clear?
Very good, sir.
All right.
Is the recommendation of the committee to support SB 439?
Which one is that? Is that item three or four?
That's number three, and legalizing marijuana business, Mr. Steinberg's bill.
Yeah, what I think I want to do is bring it to the council with the recommendation so we can have a healthy discussion. So, I could understand if you were opposed. I'm like 85% there, but this is just, I think it'll be easier for our colleagues.
I just want, what is going to be the recommendation?
Well, if we vote on it, it'll be, recommendation will be to support.
Okay. All right. And then, on number five, number four.
Four, yeah.
I just want to say, although the resolution that we put forward is opposition for 566, I would support the CLA's report because on further review, we've determined that the legislation covers most of law enforcement's concerns, and the fact that it requires a federal approval to cultivate is another safeguard, and that there's also a safeguard that any marijuana found outside of the cultivation area will be deemed to be marijuana. And the only minor concern by law enforcement that's left is if there is a hemp field that is used as a cover to grow marijuana. It will then require analysis by law enforcement. But again, with the federal requirement to approve, it's something in which I think there's.
Was this the bill that you brought to chief down or the head of the?
That's right.
Yeah, okay, so, we will move to support that.
Yeah. The thing is, we just think the CLA has the accurate recommendation to receive and file because there are adequate safeguards, and LAPD lab supports that, too.
All right. Okay, so, Clerk, are you clear where I'm coming from without objection?
Yes, sir. Perhaps for clarification, I can.
Go right ahead.
Very good.
You're so good at that.
For item number three, the city position would be to include in its 2013-14 state legislative program, support of SB 439. And for item number four, it would be to include in its 2013-14 state legislative program, support for SB 566.
Okay, without objection, that'd be the order. Andrew, can you give these cards back to the clerk? Okay, we're going to go to item one. I'd like to call Mr. Sacks on item one.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. You're going to interfere in a public, in a private business agreement here. You could not pass legislation, you could not allow legislation to occur that kept public access TV open in the city of LA, by the way, the second-largest city in the country. But yet, you're going to step into a private dispute. Needs to be done here is needs to be looked at as in totality, this bundling system that's occurred with cabling, this monopolizing of television that's occurred with cabling and the internet. If you're going to enter into this fray, you better go all in because entering partway will just expose you to ridicule. If you're going to depend or you're going to stand up and say, we need a settlement here just so that we have NFL football, that's ridiculous. We need a settlement here so that the public isn't held over a barrel because today it's Time Warner and CBS. Tomorrow, it could be ESPN and, well, not ABC because they own them, but another carrier. It's going to go on and on, and this is just like the chambers of a revolver. Each time a chamber comes around, another bullet will be fired, and the public is in the crosshairs. Do something to defend the public this time instead of big business.
Thank you, Arnold. And Mr. Sack, I mean, Mr. Parks, I think I have this one, so you may want to just keep your seat for now unless you have a change. Go right ahead.
I'd just like to recommend that on this item, although the city has no jurisdiction, and it basically is requesting FCC to take action, I would just ask, because we get so, we've gotten so much community comment as to what are the real issues, that when this comes to council, if we have the ability to bring our ITA up to explain the city's jurisdiction, and we also have made contacts with both representatives from Time Warner and CBS to also invite them to come.
Mr. Clerk, can you add that? And with the addition of what Mr. Parks is recommending, that we have ITA and, what was that, Benar? And CBS and Time Warner. So, with that said, Mr. Labange, I would recommend that we adopt the resolution as amended.
Okay, very well.
Okay, so, without objection, that'd be the order. Mr. Clerk, is there any more business before this committee?
No, sir, nothing on the agenda.
Okay, so, before we adjourn, I saw Mr. Buscayino earlier, so I think he's broken the record of being the earliest councilman to ever come to the council chambers. So, with that said, this meeting's adjourned. Thank everyone for coming.